Welcome, everyone, to the December 2nd meeting, 2014. Tonight, we have quite a few items on our agenda, but it should be relatively short evening. So, anyway, we'll get right into it and look at the minutes. First of all, anyone here from public forum? No one? Any public announcements?
I've got several. Some good news. Hatfield's been awarded $394,000 from the state to help with additional costs of putting our water transmission line under Interstate 91 as opposed to using the utility bay on Chusson Street. And I do want, on behalf of the board, to personally thank Representative Peter Kokot, who really was instrumental in securing this award. Not only did he first try to put it in the transportation bond bill, that didn't work. And anyway, he put it subsequently in a budget action toward the end of the year. And we appreciate that very much. Second, in the good news category, we received 100% match from the state Community Preservation Act trust fund of $131,917. We were only one of 10 communities in the state to get 100% match. Third, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Station Kix 100.9 and Mr. Sean Davies for again sponsoring a benefit here in Hatfield. Police and fire departments were presented a check for $37,000. And finally, a couple of schedule reminders. Capital Improvement Planning Committee will meet on the 9th. Operating budgets are due to the town administrator by 18 December. And we're going to talk about this more later on tonight, but I ask you to mark your calendar for 15 December for a special town meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. And then we move right into the minutes. Minutes of 10/20/14.
Move to approve minutes of Board of Selectmen minutes of 10/20/2014.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Move to approve minutes of 12 November 2014.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. DPW Director's Report. Phil?
Well, before we go on to, I'm sure there's some questions in regards to the water main project. I just want to remind the residents here in Hatfield that winter is upon us and if you please could cooperate with the bylaw that's in place about pushing snow out into the street. Same thing with snow blowing snow out into the street. We've had quite a few incidents in the past and we're trying to put a curb on that this year. We clean the street up and we come back and there's snow across it. And it's nothing but, you know, more work for the DPW to go back and redo those. And there is a town bylaw that prevents that. So I just want to remind the residents.
Okay. There's one situation on Elm Street that I noticed where the new housing development is, the snow is still in the road. The way they pushed it, they didn't push it into the bank, but they left it out towards the road. And it's a dangerous situation if somebody bicycle had to go out, they'd have to go around it or whatever the case may be.
You know, Jim LaValle has been taking note of the places around town and he's forwarding that list to the police department who is the enforcer, so.
One thing is if they push it across and clean it up.
Correct. Well, they shouldn't be pushing snow in the street, so.
Okay.
What do you think?
No, I just know that there's some concerns about the water transmission project, so we can get to that.
You doing that?
Are you going to bring that up?
Oh. Are you going to wait till? Okay, we can.
Can you give us an update on the water treatment? I mean, on the water?
As Jeff said, we were awarded the money. It was posted, the second phase of the project was posted last Wednesday in the Central Register. We've been receiving calls daily about bid. The bid opening is December 17th at 2:00 PM here at Town Hall. We anticipate this to be a very competitive bid by the amount of people who've been calling because they can work during the winter jacking that line under 91, so. And as far as the other side, we're still waiting for some work from Gilaher to be completed. Michael and Ryan have been up there going through the project. I know, Ed, you've taken a ride up there and there's still some concerns out there.
I actually walked the whole thing with them and looked at all the concerns that were up there, including the brook, the silt in the brook, the runoffs, the different areas where the so-called plateaus are or the, to stop the water from running down and washing out the roads. There's quite a few areas up there that need to be addressed.
We're still holding $70,000 in retainers, so.
Right.
Until that's complete, that won't be released.
Okay.
Well, a couple of other things. One, you're talking about the contract, contract award date is in January. We anticipate that. Second, Mike Oll has completed the material for an easement with Brockway Smith. And behind the scenes, there's an agreement that this will work for all parties. And we have that information to get to our attorney to lock that down and have it signed off.
On the easement, was there any problem with easements?
No. They've worked out an arrangement that's satisfactory to both, so.
Yeah. We did a site.
Things are following in place.
We did a site visit up there, you know, where we had the original easement layout, they had a couple of concerns, so we moved the easement to their benefit. Everybody's happy that it'll work that way, so.
Good. All right. Anything else to report other than we get into the water transmission line?
Do you want to do that?
Take that up now if you want to take it out?
Do you want to do that?
I do have an abatement. The collector, town collector, had notified me. That's the paper you have in front of me. So there's an abatement in the amount of $35.17 for the water side of a 2012 bill.
I would move that the board abate the amount of $35.17 for the 2012 water bill number 1538 regarding property of the late Mr. Richard Mooney.
Second.
Motion made. Second, Ed, can you give us a little more history on this here? I mean, even though it's $35, we're abating something that doesn't even explain why here.
This is what I received from her. The house has been sold twice since this bill was issued. The bill was $35.17 of interest due to Mr. Mooney that somehow slipped through the cracks when the new owners took over. So she's looking to have that abated.
And it appears that it wasn't, we're really abating what would have been the interest and fees, not the amount of the water bill itself.
Correct. And the bill was paid.
Right.
Just the interest.
Just the interest.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
I'd like to make just one comment. I'd like to, Phil wasn't able to make our last meeting, so I'd like to publicly thank Phil for his assistance on behalf of the town in securing that $360,000 grant from the state for the sidewalks. So we appreciate your help in that, Phil.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. HCTV, the options. Paul?
Okay. Well, as you know, the school, Smith Academy, has been having discussions with us about moving the HCTV facility out of the school and someplace else. So actually, John Novak and myself are going to meet with John at his request. He wants to know more about what's involved with it. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be an easy process or a cheap one, for that matter. But he wants to get a better handle on, you know, what's involved with all this. So we'll be getting together with him in the next couple of weeks or so. But John and I have also been talking about, you know, well, if we lose that space, you know, where are we going to go? And we've been kicking around the idea of, you know, creating some space up on the stage, basically like building a cube up there. That might be the best long-term solution because we can't think of anyplace else to go, quite frankly.
Well, it's a good use of the space.
Pardon me?
It's a better use of the space than what's occurring at the moment.
It's kind of a storage space now, if you want to call it that. It's kind of a mess back there, but that's what it's been all along. And we could, we could use funding that we get from Comcast in order to create that. So I asked, I asked John to, you know, put a schematic together of what his space reclaimers would be and then, you know, maybe forward that off to one of our local architects and maybe come up with some plans. So it's a thought at this point, but that's where we're at with that.
And while we're undertaking that, I just think it's important for people to understand why collectively we're having this conversation, and that is that the school is looking, is looking to expand or has a need to expand its classroom and band programs. And so they're actually reclaiming space that's being used now and has been used for quite some time from cable TV. But there's a reason that this is happening, not for the sake of just not having cable TV there anymore. So I just wanted to make sure the town people understood the reasoning behind it.
Is the intent to move everything from school here or are some functions or activities to remain there and reduce footprint or what?
I think, from our perspective, meaning John and myself, we would really prefer if we could keep the space where all the equipment is. Because that's going to be the expensive part of the move. You know, we'd have to set up this building in order to be able to broadcast. We would also lose our.
Capability. I want to have the mic up. Your mic's talking.
We'd lose our current capability. We'd lose our current capability to be able to transmit town meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be a complicated process. But yeah, John and I would really prefer if we can, you know, keep that, that small space where all the equipment is. And I mean, I still think it's an option and I think John Robert is open to the idea. But they're looking into their own spatial needs and so that's going to determine, you know, the final outcome here.
Okay. And we're looking to make the move next summer?
Yeah, John said.
For the fall of 2015?
Lieutenant said, you know, if, you know, a full move is required, you know, they would like to have the space available by next September, beginning of school.
Okay.
Expedited permitting.
Yeah, just a quick update. After many months of discussion and et cetera, et cetera, I did submit the letter of interest to BVP yesterday, which was the last day I could do so. I faxed it and also emailed Larry Smith, my contact there, so. They will be making decisions on that, I believe, in January sometime, so we'll find out. So that's that.
I want to see that on the agenda for quite a while.
Yeah. We can take it off now.
Thank you. Water transmission line. Phil, any more on the water transmission line?
I think we can.
Excuse me?
Okay. Other than what's going on there? Pioneer Valley Planning Council, Valley Vision.
Yeah, that was, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was looking for, this is kind of leftover from the meeting that got canceled, because this is kind of old now, an old topic. But they were looking for feedback, you know, from all the towns on their, on their regional plan. Yeah, I forwarded all that information to the Chair of the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, though I'm not sure if they, you know, ever responded to it. But anyways, that's what that was all about.
BVP C was looking for an answer from the Board of Selectmen to include the responses of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. They were looking for them by the 28th. And this is in response to a grant they've got from the state to try and merge what the state is using for priority development areas and priority areas for protection into one, as opposed to state having something and then regionally we have something else. So they were looking for a Hatfield response, which apparently is a little late in getting there, but we owe them a response. Because it will, it will then govern things like what investments the state makes. We may not have anything. They had, they did a real good job. Paul Dostal and I went to the session held in Hadley where they briefed the whole package again. So, but it's primarily Planning Board and Conservation Commission to really take a hard look at, do they have it described properly?
So are we going to get, are we going to get this information in on time?
Well, I think the deadline has come and gone. Isn't that correct, Jeff?
28th of November?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I haven't, I, I did hear back from Ron Sassy saying, thanks for the information, but as far as, you know, any submittals that were made, I don't know.
All right, so it's still up in the air?
Yeah, I guess.
Put it on our next meeting?
Well, I'll tell you what, if they don't answer, just say, no answer, they concur.
They concur, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Don't have to go chase them.
CPC submittals.
Yeah, so December 1st was the deadline for submitting proposed projects to the Community Preservation Committee. So I submitted three projects, you know, at the request of the board, the additional money for the Town Hall renovations, which primarily include a new handicap accessible ramp and/or sidewalks, an elevator, and sprinkler system. So that was one project. The other project was the renovation of the Prospect Street Bridge to transform it into a functional pedestrian bridge. And the third project was, you know, a small project to basically hire a landscape architect to come up with some options of what to do with the Center School site once the school comes down. Yeah, obviously, we don't want it looking like a vacant lot over there, so, you know, come up with some, some design options for that. So those, those projects are in. Yeah, they also make their.
There was one more we talked about, Paul, and that's the land next door we talked about.
I did not submit that because we do not have a negotiated price with the landowners. So I thought it was very premature to attempt that. And so, and we need to talk about that.
But can't you get it on their roster and when it does happen, they can?
They'll be making their decision in January. The board needs to discuss this and, you know, it's posted, you know, on the, later on in the meeting.
But I'd like to at least get a placeholder in there for us, you know?
I mean, the other, the three reasons, timing, the timing wasn't right, you know, we haven't talked to the people, we haven't negotiated with them. The other issue is that it doesn't fall within their criteria. I mean, just buying land for the sake of buying land is not, is not.
Land is for recreation. That's what it's for. And that falls right within the whole thing.
Well.
I talked to Bob Wagner about it.
Okay. Well, anyways, I did not.
We have this on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, I think the board needs to, the board needs to decide.
But my point being, I just want to get a placeholder in there. They can always reject it and we can just withdraw it. The big thing is it's due December 1st.
But, you know.
Let them know that it's out there possibly.
And the fourth reason is the board has not voted to go after that property.
Okay.
So anyways, that's where we are.
Talk about executive session and pricing.
Okay. All right. Joint meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss special town meeting. That's happening at 6:30. How about 5:30?
Yeah, well, one of the, one of the Finance Committee members, because you can only get here at 6:30 at the earliest, so.
We can come back to it.
Yeah, we'll come back to that one.
We may have to take a break. Move that to the end of the meeting.
Town Administrator's Report. Let's, let's do that.
Yeah. Center School. Okay, so as everybody knows, I guess, Town Meeting voted to dismantle the Center School building and also appropriated $300,000 for that purpose. The first thing that needs to happen will be the hazardous materials abatement. So we now have under contract an environmental consulting firm who will do a complete survey of the building and put together the specs so we can put the abatement part of the project out to bid. So they anticipate that they will start on that project either later on this week or next week sometime. So I anticipate, you know, the actual work to take place over the winter. And then we'll move on to the second phase of the project, which will be the demolition. So, you know, we're going to have to, once again, we'll have to hire, you know, probably an engineering firm or an architectural firm, you know, to put the specs together for that. So I, my vague timeline here is I see that work happening in the spring sometime.
Are we going to sell some of the steel off? Are we going to sell the roof off? I mean, a slate on a roof is very.
Yeah, I've heard some, well, one thing that needs to get, one thing that needs to get done is the brass plaque needs to be removed, for starters. You know, with all the names of the building committee, you know, we don't want that to go. Yeah, I've heard one idea that's been floated is to save the cupola.
Cupola, right.
To put on the gazebo that we're going to put in the park over here, which I thought was a pretty nifty idea, actually. Yeah, I've heard other people saying that, you know, that some, the slate for the blackboards is a sought-after item. So that's something we're going to have to look into further.
So there's stuff that you could put out for bid and people could bid on it.
Yeah.
And get it out there and then get another bid for the demolition period.
Yeah.
I don't know why we have to have an architect to have a bid to take the building down.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, just get a price on taking it down. Why pay somebody $20,000 to tell us that it's going to be knocked down with a ball and chain, whatever?
Yeah. So we've got, we have to work out some details on all that, so. As far as the environmental issues are concerned, you know, we just got to follow the law on that.
Yeah, that's understandable. But as far as taking it down, it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I would just think we would need someone to do an inventory, for lack of a better, you know, there's 20 blackboards that are, whatever they are, eight by 10, and do something like that from room to room.
What you do is.
And how much steel is up there and how big the roof is with the slate, you know, so people have an idea of all that.
Actually, Phil went through the building with demolition contractor.
So that's how we can, you know, market it, if in fact that's what we're going to do, is to try to recoup some of those, some of the costs.
Well, some of those, well, I don't want to belabor this now, it's not the appropriate time, but, I mean, I don't understand how you separate the steel, I mean, from the demolition.
Oh, I don't either.
Well, all that steel was brought in through the windows on the other side. It was all brought in afterwards.
So by when you cut the steel out, the roof is.
They're not cutting it out, just unbolt it. That's all it does is strengthen the roof, okay? So once you take the slate off the roof, the steel comes out, even if they cut a hole in the roof and take the steel right out with the crane that way, okay? It doesn't mean anything because once everything's out of the building and the slate's off, the slate, the steel comes right out, just unbolt it. It's all bolted together. The way it was put in, it was brought in piece by piece, put in to shore up the roof, okay? And we did that back in, Gene Prue, as a matter of fact, when he was Selectman, he's the one that did that. That was his project back in the late 70s.
Well, there were, well, potentially then there's one option of trying to bring in a crew to take it out. Or second, it's material available to whoever gets the contract to tear down to go dispose of and gain any payback.
But that's an option. That's an option.
It's an option.
So you have.
Otherwise, you're bringing in the crew, you know.
That's their problem, okay? If somebody wants to bid on the steel and they want to give us a price of $60,000 for the steel and they figure out how to take it out of there, that's it.
I mean, any demolition contractor, I would think, you know, is going to factor in the cost of those materials into his bid and it's going to be a competitive bid, so.
But you do an option.
Yeah.
Do an option. Give us with the steel and without.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's easy to do.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
I'm sorry I took this off.
Well, we got, we got some time to kill here, anyway, Jeff, so.
There's some other things about.
What we're trying to do is get the best, best thing here, best price.
The best price, yeah.
Yeah.
There are some other things. We've got storage over there.
Mm-hmm.
That, folks, folks need to think about where things are going to go.
Or throw out.
Or, oh, amen. You mentioned, well, you've been talking about things like the slate roof and all that, you know. Bill Beldon, I was going to bring it up later, when we were talking about disposal of town property, he was mentioning the pool stations in there.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Which we need to, yeah, apparently they're.
There's a lot of historical stuff in there.
Historical stuff there and he's wondering if they can have one to give away. Well, I think we need to sort out whether that's really what we want to do. So we need to go through, like you were suggesting, about what, what are some of the things that.
Yeah, what do we want to save?
Are unique.
And find out first if the Historical Society wants anything from there. They might want a blackboard from the old school. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's up to them.
Another thing is, as demonstrated at the special town meeting, there's a lot of interest in that site. And it may be, and I'm not suggesting we're going to do anything tonight, but just to add something to our activities to create some kind of forum for folks to have an opportunity to provide some suggestions. You know, you were talking about the landscaping. What is it folks want up top? What about parking? What about the remainder? Is there, is there some real interest in developing, you know, that whole site for recreational kinds of purposes? And what would that plan look like?
Well, you would want, you definitely want parking over there.
Yeah. See, it needs, we, all those things need to be, before we go to landscaping, we ought to really decide, well, what's this whole thing going to look like?
To me, my, my thought on that would be once the building's gone, you keep the parking down below the hill so you can't see the cars. So when you look for Main Street, you look right at the river, right over the top of the cars.
I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm.
You don't want to see a parking lot.
But we, there's interest in down towards the dyke, views of the river and those kinds of things. There's parking needs, there's a variety needs. Someone ought to be looking at the entire site as one picture.
Well, we need to give ideas to the architect or the designer on fitting this stuff in. That's what basically needs to be done.
I'm just suggesting that it would be worthwhile to have some kind of activity like that. Another thing is Kathy Gao's proposed essentially a wake for the Center School. I don't know if you saw her.
Yeah, it's a great idea, I think.
So.
Those people. For those people that wanna go through for the last time, that kinda stuff, yeah.
Orchestrate something like that, I don't know if we're gonna talk about that tonight or 16th, or maybe talk about it on the 16th.
Well, I'd like to hear her ideas beforehand, because there's some liability problems that we have in there if we're not careful.
Yeah, yeah. Kathy was in my office there, I think it was last week, and we talked about that. And, yeah, the consensus was that, you know, we'd rope off the attic in the basement and strictly be for the classrooms, 'cause, you know, yeah, both of those spaces are kinda nasty, yeah.
It has to be done during the day, because there's no lighting in there.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
There's lights on in there. You can turn the light.
In the basement, that's the only light.
Yeah.
No, up in, up in the upper area.
Basement, he's saying. There's, there's not much light in the basement.
Oh, there's not much light in the basement.
No.
Okay. The concern, another concern that I have is the sec, going to the second floor, using the stairway. People come with kids, those railings are not up to, up to code, so they, you know, they could be a dangerous situation there, too.
Yeah.
It's liability on our part.
Well, it was, it was a, a nice proposal, and I think we ought to think about it and.
Mm-hmm. I mean, but I want, I want everybody to think, you know, the safety part of it, too.
And, well, they need to do something like that before they start remediation.
Okay, anything else on the Center School?
I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, emergency services building.
Okay, well, as usual, there's really not much to report. However, you know, as, as part of any public building process in, in the state, once the project is completed, uh, the owner of the project is required to fill out an evaluation form that is submitted to the Division of Capital Asset Management. So I received the evaluation form from DCAM, as they're called, a few weeks ago, and submitted it last week.
With all the problems?
And, actually, I, I had Mark Gilat, the architect on the project, uh, assist me with it, 'cause I wanted to get his opinion on certain things. So that was submitted to the state. We're also required to submit it to the contractor, that was also submitted the same day. And, you know, I'll just say that it was not a sterling evaluation.
Good. Okay. Glad to hear that. Ever, anything else on that?
No, no.
I've got a few things on here. Uh, one is, there needs to be a fence with a, with a gate. Uh, it needs to continue on from the park area to the building. Um, it's a safety feature. Kids are cutting through there where the generator is and stuff like that. So we need to get that completed. We need to take a look at the phone system over there, okay? It needs, Verizon needs to hook up their wires, okay, and, and put a backup phone in there. Police fire an ambulance. Due to the Comcast problem that we had last Friday, okay, when we didn't have any service, that was not a good situation. Also, on that same building, we've got the door to the fire department that's gotta get in there and whatever you're gonna do on the front.
The fire department door is in. It's completed.
How about the roof?
The roof's not in, but the door's in.
Okay, so you got the door in, all right. And, um, so that, that's gotta be completed there. Also, um, let's see what the heck else. Okay, the, the, oh, this, this is not related to the building, well, it is and it's not. The police and fire, I mean, ambulance and fire are looking to have their own server over there, okay? What happens is when Comcast, right now, they're tied into our server, so internet service over there is, is tied in with the server here. So when this server is down, like it was this past weekend, they can't do any reports or anything, okay? So, um, I don't know why, I guess because of the storm, the power outages, whatever, they couldn't boot the server up over here. So what, what they're asking for is to get their own server over there to run their own operation, which I agree, and then have just a line connecting them to this server to get forms and whatever else needs to be. I don't know what the cost is.
Yeah, well, Chief Beldon, you know, talked to me about that, so I, um, I sent an email off to Scott at Peregus telling him that we need, you know, they, they looking to have their own server over there, so. And we've still got, we've still got money left over in the, in the, the account for that building, so, you know, I think we can take it out of there.
Now, the other option that we have, instead of fooling around with the servers, moving the servers, is to put a generator, a small, like a house-style generator to run the, uh, servers, the heat in the town hall, because right now, the only thing we operate on is a generator that we bring from the highway department. And to run a small generator roughly costs $5,000 with installation, just like you wouldn't have in your own house. It'd take care of the heat in this building and it'd take care of the server room, so you wouldn't have any downtime if the power goes out. And, and I'd like to maybe, you know, I'd like to have the board think about pursuing that, just to have that protected there, so if the power does go out, the server and everything doesn't have to go down and crash, 'cause every, it seems like it's happening more and more and more lately. Every time you come into town hall, the servers are down, people can't get emails, can't, can't do their daily work. We gotta call Peregus and it costs a ton of money.
Does, um, does Peregus only deal with the computer aspect of the town or at least of town hall, or can they also recommend and project manage the communication side of things? And what I'm referring to is not only what you just talked about, I mean, I think the computer company should make a recommendation of what town hall needs to stay up and running. But you talked about having another carrier have a backup line.
Verizon, yeah.
So Verizon or whoever.
Or whoever, right.
You know, but who, who do we have, or do we have anybody that can make those kinds of recommendations and coordination efforts on behalf, not only the computers, but for the phone service as well? And I, I totally agree, there should be a backup service over there.
Yeah.
But I, I don't, does the chief just make a call? Do they go through you, Paul? Do we have someone, you know, that can, that can help?
Phil is the one that takes care of building man, maintenance or building management.
Yeah, but usually you have a consultant of some sort that.
Do we have a comm person?
A telecom person to help with suggestions and recommendations and that type of thing.
But Peregus does do that, I mean.
Yeah, for more than the computers.
But I mean, why would we pay somebody if, if you know you need the line over there?
Yeah.
I am hard-pressed to pay a consultant to tell me I need a line over there, two lines.
So, so I, I agree that there should be more lines, but there's a way of having them interact with the current service and if they're automatically gonna flip over, and which one takes, it, it, it's not as simple as just putting in a spare line. You know, if the main number to town is down, that's one company, and if you have a backup line, then those calls from the main company aren't gonna necessarily go over to the, you know, I mean, there's gotta be a coordinated effort. And, and I agree, something should be done, Ed. I, I'm just curious if we had someone that we work with from a telecom basis, so we get it right the first time. I mean, there, to me, there should have been two separate servers anyways. You know, there, there shouldn't be two buildings served off of one location of all the electronics. I mean, that's just not how it's normally done.
That's like the assessors in here have their own server.
Right, right.
Okay, that's, I was very adamant about keeping it separate, okay?
Or you can have two and one's a backup, if one goes down, then it automatically comes up. I mean, there's all sorts of ways of doing it, but none of us would necessarily know how that works without someone that, you know, does that day in and day out.
And the electronic side.
Right, so.
Peregus could probably deal with everything with, with the computerized stuff.
Yeah, I mean, they don't.
And they might even have the answer.
They might have connections, yeah.
They might have the experience from their office to do what you're asking for, Brian, too.
Yeah, I mean, they don't get into, you know, phone systems, per se, but, you know.
But they probably work with other vendors, right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, for, for the internet, Comcast is our main provider, but we also have Crocker Communications as a backup, so.
Is, is Crocker under a contract with us?
Yeah.
I, I think that they could probably answer some of the phone system questions. I don't mean to put them on the spot, but I, I know they're well-versed in, in communication, so maybe that's.
Something to look into.
Something to, to contact.
Well, getting that emergency services billing set up is, is the priority of all those things you just talked about. I thought we had done something about phones long ago, 'cause we had this conversation about when Comcast goes down.
Then what?
We did, and I.
And so, I'm a little surprised that we're.
They got an airfare.
Here we are, but it's better that we're doing it now before an incident has occurred than in the middle of an incident, so.
I thought it was already taken care of, okay, because.
So that, that is a priority.
That was one of the big things we said, like you said, in the very beginning.
That is our emergency service center. We're using that fire area and the meeting room there for emergency management sessions when something happens.
Absolutely.
Needs comm, it's critical.
Now that we've opened up the discussion about a generator for the building, and I agree 100% with you that something should be put in here, I mean, to haul the one from the transfer station down here is just nothing, 'cause it doesn't power anything up anyways. So on that note, over this past storm, we did have a problem with the highway garage that the power was out. Police and fire couldn't get fuel, we couldn't get fuel, none of the doors open, so I'm gonna put in a late communication into capital planning to run a generator up there for that purpose, because we are there 24/7 during a storm outage and that is our fuel supply. The good thing up there, as well as this building, is there's natural gas on the site, so. Hook it right up to the natural gas. Hook it right up to the natural gas.
And you don't need a big commercial one like we have back there, it just.
Flips right over.
So I know that, you know, we set up something temporary to plug the generator in up there. We had Psoric Electric up there to do something temporary. But the long-term goal is to put a natural gas generator up at that site as well as here. I agree with you 100% on that. Do we, do we have any funds available left from this project?
No.
Okay.
No, we pretty much, we chewed it all up.
And what do we have left over in that building?
Last time I knew, I still, I think there was another $20,000 in there. I'd have, I'd have to check with the accountant on that.
Okay, I mean, we.
There has been, money has been spent on that, you know, as we've been going along here.
We wanna make sure everything is complete over there, 'cause I told, I know Bill was supposed to, there was supposed to be telephone, I mean, lines for their communication lines for the, uh.
You mean the Wi-Fi?
To put another, no, put another TV screen there for weather and that kinda stuff.
Oh, okay, I don't know anything about that, yeah, yeah.
That needs to get done, that's part of what, what they wanted originally and, and every, it just keeps getting put off and put off, and then all of a sudden, everybody's gonna forget about it and go from there. It's like, let's get this thing done, let's get the project complete, just like in here. I mean, we talked about TV screen, we talked about projection, we talked about a lot of stuff in here, so, you know, it's time that we look at what our problems are right here at home and, and deal with this stuff here and make sure they get done and follow them through. You know, I, I mean.
Well, let's come back, how about, I'm surprised we have Paul and Phil work with the appropriate folks and come back for our next session to chat about requirements here that we might put in the operating budget and/or capital budget, and the same for the emergency services, although you've got, we have funding for that.
Yeah.
If it means completing that building completely over there and there's $10,000 left, we take five and five, or we have it switched over, five for the highway, five for this building, put a, put a generator system in here. You know, it's as simple as that, and it doesn't have to be a big thing, like I said. Just a regular household generator is gonna run the furnace and, and some lights in, in the computer room. And up there would be the highway department, you know, the lights and the, and the pumps. Okay. All right. Green Communities Grant.
Yeah, just a quick update. You know, we have six projects going on, um, and the, I think I'd mentioned in a previous meeting that the weatherization project at the highway garage is complete. I'm meeting with our, our contractor next week. We've got three more projects lined up that are supposed to be completed by December 15th. You know, the installation of some new refrigeration controls at both schools, and then the installation of these variable speed drives at Smith Academy, so, uh, that's the latest on that, so, you know, we're, we're chipping away at these projects as we move along here.
How about the water, wastewater transmission, wastewater treatment plant project?
Yeah, um, that one, I was, last I knew, was probably not gonna get completed until the spring sometime. The, the unit that they are going to install is custom-made.
Okay.
So it's in the process of being assembled. And, and that's all I have there.
Okay. Any old business?
Yes. Motion approved, the list of computer surplus property dated 13 November 2014, the surplus to the needs of the town of Hatfield.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried.
And we're, we're gonna look separately at the pool station proposal that Bill Beldon had, as to whether or not, Bill Beldon was asking for permission to use one of the pool stations from Center School, so we're, we're deferring that for the moment. How did we ever close with, was it Ron Sassy, I believe, concerning the parcel next door here, Smith Academy, and where the boundary lines were?
Okay, I got a, I got a call from Anna talking about, she thinks they're just about ready to talk with us again about the land transfer.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, she said that they were having a meeting and that she'd like to get on the agenda, on one of our agendas here, so. Okay, so that's where we're at with that.
Well, there were some other pieces to where the boundaries were. Okay, we'll, we'll defer to them. There are a number of appointments, are we gonna deal with any of them? Some we left from a few meetings ago? If we're not ready for them, let's not address them, but.
The only ones that we would be looking at are the.
Their public, the library.
I've talked to Eliza, the director, today, as a matter of fact, so I'm scheduling the trustees to come into our meeting on the 16th to make this appointment, 'cause once again, this is, both boards need to meet and make the appointment.
Okay.
Okay, so you put them in for our next meeting?
Pardon me?
You put them in for our next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're not acting on those, okay.
And planning board.
We'll do that tomorrow night.
We'll do that tomorrow night.
7:30?
7:30, yeah.
Can't wait. Do we have a quorum? Do we have a quorum for tomorrow night?
I was.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know.
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right, well, I'll be there then.
Any other old business? If not, uh.
Just.
Unanticipated business.
No, old business, uh, performance reports, have we?
They've, they've been distributed to everyone.
Okay, the forms have been distributed and inputs requested for, that ones we're rating on.
Yeah, yeah.
For December, and then we'll close in January. And we're not on the ballot to eliminate our town administrator.
That was sent to me by one of my colleagues in Berkshire County, and I thought, I gotta share this with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you think, uh. Yeah, if you think, yeah, some towns really get themselves in a jam.
Before we go into executive session, did you want to talk about, you had some issue you wanted to raise about the motion for tomorrow, or, excuse me, for the, for the 15th?
Yeah, well, I thought, I thought we would have this discussion with the finance committee as well.
Well, let's get our own act together.
You know, let's talk about it. We can.
This is with regard to the special town meeting, and Paul had some comments about the motion to be made.
So, you know, once we determined that, yes, indeed, you know, we do have time to have a special town meeting, and it was determined that we have to do it as soon as we possibly can, and the 15th was as soon as we possibly could. So I had to get, you know, the warrant posted immediately. So at the time, the only surefire place that I knew that we could get the money was from stabilization, so that's, that's how I wrote the article. I have since determined that we still have, we have $36,716 under the levy limit. So, as opposed to raising it from, transferring it from stabilization, we do have the option to raise and appropriate $36,000. Now, I know, I would have thought that, you know, this is a, this is a technical issue, a financial issue, and I would not think that there would be any concerns about it. It's something we have to do. It's something we have to do if we're going to get the tax rate set, so.
Yeah, but we can amend it on town hall floor.
Yeah.
Where the funding comes from.
But stabilization requires a two-thirds vote. There was some concern in town hall about being able to muster that vote. So if we did, you know, amend it at the beginning of, of the meeting, you know, to raise and appropriate, you know, that's an option. So I think it's something we need to decide, you know, if that's what we want to do.
I think we need to get further discussion with the finance committee and find out what's going on there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to move on to the, the one, the unforeseen by the chair here. This 61 chapter land, 61A, that we want to remove it from. I think we have to exercise our rights.
You're the only one that got that.
Yeah.
What's that?
You're the only one that has this.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Rigish's property?
Yeah. Where is it? I move that the Towne of Hatfield not exercise its right of first refusal under Massachusetts general law 61A, section 14. For land on the Wesley side of Straits Road, 1.5 acres approximately, shown as parcel B on a plan recorded as Plan Book 229, page 103, owned by John Rigish of Eight River Drive, Hadley.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so we'll have to sign off on this here, that's all.
That's the original. Is there an original somewhere?
I think it's got to be done by the North Republic.
The original is in.
Lydia's office.
The front office.
Okay.
Just, just for everybody's information, when, when we sign off on 61A, we, we have, we can exercise our rights to either purchase it for the selling price or not purchase it. If for some reason it had some value to the town, then, and we had the money, then we could, we could certainly exercise our rights, because 61 land, 61 chapter land, that's our right. If somebody signs up for it, we're giving them a tax break, but we also have the right to purchase it when they go to sell it. And that's what we're doing. We're not exercising our rights in this case. Okay. Why don't we take a short joint executive session?
Yeah, let me. I move to board a select and convene in the executive session their Massachusetts general law, chapter 30A, section 2, we sixth consider the purchase of real estate. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
A motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is by Roll Call Volt. Lesko, aye.
Boyle, aye.
Moriarty, aye.
We will reconvene after the meeting. We'll be in there for probably 20 minutes. We'll be back. Welcome back. We're meeting with the, joint meeting with the finance committee to discuss the money transfer and the special town meeting coming up. Money needs to be transferred for sewer available surplus, I mean, sewer enterprise fund. And Mike, you're here, town accountant's here, to discuss what happened and give us some kind of an explanation here, so we all understand it totally. And maybe the folks at home will get a little preview of what the town meeting's about and, and help out here. So, Mike?
I beg, I beg permission to defer to Paul.
Yeah, I just, I want to start off the discussion.
Okay.
Daryl, I've got some handouts here for you guys. The issue is, on the first page, the two pages that I handed out, you see, I've outlined sewer, the sewer revs, sewer revenue. That is the figure, the $432,292. That was the figure that was voted on at town meeting. So, you know, we're in the process now of putting in all the documentation to submit to the Department of Revenue in order to get our, our tax rate set, which we really need to have the Department of Revenue sign off on that before the end of the year, which is why this, you know, we're, we're rushing into this town meeting. So that is the figure that town meeting voted on. So, in a nutshell, what occurred, because that, that figure is not generated by just one individual. So there isn't just one set of eyes that, that focuses in on that. The DPW director comes up with the operating budget, which was pretty much level funded for this year, except for some small salary increases. And the rest of it is generated by the treasurer's office, dealing with indirect costs and the debt service. So what didn't happen this year, which should have happened, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is so that it doesn't happen again. Nobody raised the question as to whether or not that was a viable figure or not, because if anybody had, Michael would have started doing his analysis, and he said, there's not enough money here to generate this. So, you know, the problem occurred during the budget process, so we're not going to let that happen again. And I'll just say that I've had several conversations with our former treasurer, Louise Liz, about this, and quite frankly, when she was here, this is one of the things that she would keep an eye on, so, but she's not here now, so. So that's the number that was voted on at town meeting. If we go to the second page, this is the, one of the forms that the accountant has to fill out to submit to the Department of Revenue. So we have two columns there, FY14, actual revenues, so the real numbers that were brought in, and then estimates for FY15. So there was a sewer rate increase, and that's all been factored into these numbers. But as you, the, I've got the arrow pointing at the total revenues, and that is $396,292. So, the best that Mike could come up with that could be justifiable to the Department of Revenue was $396,292 as the total sewer revenue. And that's $36,000 less than the figure that was voted on at town meeting. That's why we need to go to town meeting to make that adjustment.
Okay. For the listening audience, what Paul said is, the problem is, we overestimated income in sewer by about $36,000 that now needs to be covered in order for us to set our tax rate.
Okay, my, my question here is, if we're looking at what was approved at town meeting, $432,000, okay? Why wouldn't the $432,000, that's what we voted on, why wouldn't that $432,000 be putting in, put in, be put in under total revenues?
It was originally. That's, that's what I just said, the problem. I did have that number. I did have revenue come up to $432,292, but that knocked the user charges up to like $417,000. The increase from actual 14 to estimated 15 was way over the threshold that the Department of Revenue would let us use. Even with the seven and a half percent increase, it was still way too high, and they won't approve it.
Yeah, Department of Revenue is, you know, is not going to, they're not, they don't let towns fudge numbers. It's got to look reasonable to them, so. And then of what, the 415, and, yeah, it was, they, was not a reasonable figure. So where's that money going to come from?
Right, well.
I guess the question that I have is, when we're sitting down going through the finance, finances of all the departments and so on, okay, the $432,000, is that the figure that was given to us when we were figuring out the budgets originally, when we sat down?
Yes.
And started going through?
Yes.
Okay, so if it was, the, the money should be there.
No, it's not.
No.
I mean, your, your expenses are generally more fixed. You have your principal and interest. You have the various allocations to various staff or salaries and benefits, and, and other things like that, but, which are pretty clear. Because you don't have a lot of volatility in the number of people working in this area that are being allocated cost. Your revenues are, are subject to change, weather, more rain, less usage of water, your sewer revenue just goes down.
Well, I understand that part, Jeff.
So, so that's, that's a more volatile number, and this was an estimate.
During the budgeting process, as I remember it, we usually sit down and we look at estimated revenues. That's one of our tasks, you know, whether it's excise or et cetera, down, down the road, and we just must have, you know, doesn't matter who came in, we just overestimated.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Do we have that number that we, do we have that number there when we first started doing last year's budget?
$432,000.
$432.
Yeah. Somebody gave us that number.
Okay, so that's the number that we use, $432.
That's correct.
But it's just an incorrect.
But it hasn't materialized and won't materialize, and it's significantly out of range.
Regardless of whether it will materialize.
In terms of increase from, over the prior year for DOR to accept.
DOR doesn't believe it will materialize.
Right.
Regardless of whether it will or it won't.
It doesn't matter at this point.
Yeah. If you had a legitimate story, other than just the seven and a half percent, if there were some other circumstances.
You added 300 new homes to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
But we don't have that story.
No, we can't.
Because we did, we did increase sewer revenue.
Seven percent. Well, we increased the rate seven percent.
That's what I meant.
Increased water five percent.
Seven percent.
Or seven and a half, was it?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
And when we figure this, we always figured on the, on the wet year. We didn't go with the dry year, because the dry year was extra money in our pocket, if I recall. That's what we talked about.
We always try to figure conservatively.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't that many years ago that we had a similar problem with DOR and overestimating.
Eight years ago.
Yeah. We overestimated excise or something like that. Huh?
I think we're actually right, but yeah.
Yeah. They didn't like the num, like you said. Doesn't matter. DOR doesn't like the num.
So given that we've got this hole of $36,000 in this current year budget, under the DOR rules, unless we cover this down and, and set a tax rate by the end of December, we're not able to bill in what month?
If we send the bills out after December 31st, they're not due until May 1st.
Right, one bill. So you lose interest, you lose that cash flow.
Yeah, we'll probably have to borrow.
Yeah.
Right.
We will have to borrow.
Yeah.
And you still have to solve the problem.
Right.
So.
You still have to get the money.
So, so I guess that's question number two, like, so we can have a town meeting, but.
Have we explored?
Where do we get the money?
Well, there's two places to get the money. One is from stabilization, and two is from raised through taxation, because we have, like Jeff says, that $36,000 hole, we're below the levy limit by $36,000.
Yeah, when I, when I put the article together, the only surety that I had about where to get the money was from stabilization. So that's the way the article's written, to get thirty, transfer from stabilization $36,000, which needs a two-thirds vote. I have since found out that we are $36,719 under the levy limit. So, we've been talking about that here today, about, well, should we, should we, you know, go with stabilization, or should we amend that article right from the outset to raise and appropriate 36?
That's where you guys amend.
I'd like to hear how the finance committee feels about that.
What's the impact of $36,000?
Pardon me?
What's the impact of $36,000?
It's not much.
Not. It just, it wouldn't require the two-thirds, correct?
No, no, yeah.
Yeah.
As far as your taxes, $36,000?
What's the impact?
50 cents?
Pennies?
Yeah, I don't think it would be anywhere near that much.
Oh, yeah. Oh, on the rate, it wouldn't be that much, no, I mean, pennies.
Oh, oh, yeah, right.
On the average tax bill, I don't know what it would be.
It would be pretty much noticeable.
Of course, would reserve our stabilization fund, should.
This is, in my mind, it's pretty tough to go to stabilization for a revenue issue, isn't it? Am I the only one thinking that's a little dicey?
Well, I mean, the, the reality is, if we had projected it being $36,000 lower than what we projected, we wouldn't be $36,000 below the levy limit right now.
Yeah, right.
We'd be basically at the levy limit.
At the levy limit.
Because we're.
Right.
So.
We're actually going in later. We always try to be below the levy limit. Well, we have to be below the levy limit anyway, for equal.
Yeah, we can't be above it. What I'm saying is, well, either we, I guess we either would have been at the levy limit, or we would have funded departments differently somehow.
Yeah.
But, we wouldn't have gone to stabilization to cover $36,000 on the whole of the budget.
No, no, no. Again, Paul was just.
No, yeah.
No, I know, I know, I'm just saying.
Hit us through this.
As a way of evaluating this, if we had done this originally, we certainly would not have gone to town meeting and said, oh, yeah, and, we're going to do this budget, and we're going to take $36,000 on a stabilization to balance it out.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I question, Paul, is that you might want to check with the attorney, that can we, in the motion, can we change, can we change the motion to read that it comes through taxation?
Well, actually, I, I sent an, I sent an email off to the moderator today about this, and, yeah, he said, you know, if you want to change it, you know, the best thing to do is change it right off the bat. Now, Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to amend the article to, right off the bat.
To read through taxation instead of stabilization.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, I, that's what I think we should do.
Without doing the motion, check with the attorney, because in, in the, in the motion itself, we might be able to change, because the intent is still there. The intent is to fund that account.
Yeah.
So the intent is there, so in the motion, where it comes from, we might be able to change it through the motion without doing any.
See that as a problem. Yeah, the intent is, is to fill the hole. Where, where the money comes from is, you know. know, discretionary.
But you wanna check with the attorney to make sure that we can do that like that.
But I will.
And that way, we wouldn't need to amend the article. We just have the motion.
Well, no, we need to amend the mo.
We need to amend it because it's written.
Yeah.
To take it out of stabilization, right?
Yeah.
What's written? You lost me. How, what, what's written?
He wrote the article to take it out.
We already have the article, it's already, had to be out two weeks before.
He wrote the article already to say that it was coming from stabilization.
You have to amend it. Can't, unless you're gonna take it from stabilization, you have to.
So you, you've already set a date?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We had to.
December fifteenth.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Everything had to fly.
You, you say it like I should know.
It all happened.
Little birdie came and told me, "Hey, this is when the meeting's."
It was a busy week last week.
Yeah, no, that's understood. That's understood.
Yes, it was very busy week last week.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, December, December fifteenth.
Let's close on this. Is the Finance Committee in agreement that we should, subject to coordination with Town Council, that we change the source of funds from stabilization to taxation?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll work the mechanics?
I'll work the mechanics. I'll have, I'll have the, I'll have the language ready to go.
Fifteenth, I'm just wondering.
Is that a Monday?
And just to reiterate, it is a Monday, the fifth is.
It is. It's a really bad night. It's pitch night at the Legion. There's a big meeting down at the Congregational Church that night.
So we'll know where to send the police.
So we know, we'll know where to send the police.
We have to have seventy-five people?
Seventy-five people.
Well, that was my question.
Where, 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 are you having it in the cafeteria at the high school?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I just found out from the moderator the other day, it's only a quorum if somebody calls it.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah.
I guess my question to John Novak here is, can we carve out this part of the meeting and maybe have, not only the Selectmen's meeting, but have this part of the meeting as a separate reviewing, okay? And the reason I say that is people would, instead of watching the whole Selectmen's meeting to get to this, this is a separate segment.
Yep.
Okay, that would be, that way they could see it, uh, right away, right up front, and what we're talking about here in an explanation, and, and to get it out there as soon as possible.
Set your DVR.
Put it on YouTube.
And put it in a newspaper.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get it and get that.
Put the sign out front.
We need to do a lot of publicity on this here to get the people there.
I was gonna say, maybe worth a little three-by-five card that you can send out.
Very, very important.
Robo-call.
Yeah, robo-call.
Oh, yeah, right. Because it's just gonna be one article.
Just one article, that's it. Could it take all of about fifteen minutes?
Can you come up with something controversial to put on there? You can revisit the school or something.
Yeah.
We, we could've changed the quorum fifteen or twenty.
We could revisit the rooster.
Yeah.
That always works.
That was tabled.
Yeah, the rooster was tabled, that's right.
So, do the best we can.
Yeah.
And whatever happens, happens here.
Yeah.
So, so, this is great, we'll get it fixed. So, remind me again what we're going to do to make sure we don't have this happen.
Happen again.
Happen again, because, I mean, I thought about it, and I, well, you know, was that a spreadsheet issue? And the spreadsheet gets pretty complicated.
It's pretty complicated, yeah.
Where things are funded, and we've missed things in the past, or?
Well, you know what, this, this didn't happen until late, because we were still going around and around on the rates for sewer and water.
That's true.
So there's no way that this got estimated at the beginning of the budget process, because we were at the very end of the budget process.
April is when we changed the rates.
Yeah.
I think that would help if we weren't, you know, if we weren't down to the bitter end, figuring out what the sewer and water rates are gonna be.
Yeah.
But the solution now is that, we've got the solution with the water rates, sewer rates, because we voted to automatically raise them every year.
Yeah, well, that will certainly help.
That will help, expanding the system is the answer.
Yep. But what stops us?
We'll get some numbers soon.
What stops us from having a real wet year, and people don't use the water?
Well, that's not, that's not a problem for this, though. I mean, that, that's not gonna require a special town meeting.
But the estimated receipts are not gonna be there, so we're gonna be short.
The more water you conserve.
Yeah, but you never know what's gonna happen. Yeah, the estimated receipts on water revenue might not be there, but then the estimated receipts on something else might be, you know, higher than you think.
Right.
And so you cover it.
Cover it one way or another.
Somewhere in the future. I mean, that happens all the time. We've had unexpected excise tax revenue before that was like forty thousand dollars more, fifty thousand dollars more than we thought it was gonna be, and who knows why? I mean, more people went out and bought new cars, I guess, or, you know, some, some, but a truck leasing company goes out and buys a new fleet of trucks, and all of a sudden, you're, you know, your excise taxes are just going up. So they are just estimates. The, the question is, can you get the estimate within what DOR will allow? That's all we, that's what we have to worry, that's what we worry about here.
Back to Darrell's question, though, a closer look by all parties, number one. And another thing, and we, we have adjusted the rates to pull up a bit, and of course, you know, you can only do that so far. Another thing we need to watch, we dipped into retained earnings in sewer, was it prior year? We, we took a big hunk out of that to, for debt, to, to apply towards debt.
Right.
And I think we need to be more ca, more cautious and allow that to build up a little, so you could cover down a problem.
I think on the sewer side, we should have a spreadsheet that specifically shows everything on the sewer, so we don't get into this. So that way, you fill in the blank and make sure the figures are there to cover, uh, office expenses and all that other stuff.
And direct.
Okay, and that way, when we get it, on the finance end of it, we can see that it is there, it's posted, and what the numbers are. So if we have a spreadsheet laid out accordingly, then we can see what the bottom line is. That would be very helpful. What do you think, Sean?
I mean, this is not.
I'm just looking at every aspect.
This isn't an expense problem, so.
We solved the problem and put it back to harm's.
I mean, I think we should have the expenses under control, obviously, but, I mean, this problem is a revenue estimation problem, but, but, sure.
Right.
Yeah. And we've done this, we've, we've made these, this kind of mistake before. This is, we fixed it before, before it was too late, you know? Like, we've, we've gone back and forth on estimates before. They are estimates, and, you know, sometimes we changed them, corrected them before town meeting, found that we, you know, didn't have justification for an estimate. This time, we just didn't do it.
Right. Well, we have a way ahead.
Okay.
Fifteenth of December.
December fifteenth is our special town meeting at seven o'clock at the high school.
Are we gonna meet it all before? Fifteen minutes, half hour before?
Yeah, we should post the meeting a half hour before.
Hopefully, a good idea.
Okay, just in case we have to make some kind of a arrangement. It'll be a joint meeting between the Finance Committee and Mr. Lockman. Paul, you can pull this up?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
And hopefully, everybody will be watching us and support us.
Attending.
Yeah.
Don't stay home and watch.
Yeah.
No, watching this show today, so they understand that they have to get out to the school to come to attend the, the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the impact of not being able to carry out this special town meeting will mean that we will have to borrow money to operate the town, which will cost us money.
Exactly.
Uh, and eventually, we'll have to appropriate this thirty-six thousand dollars from somewhere.
Probably, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah. That's right.
Which is why we went to the tax bill system that we have today.
So we don't have.
So we didn't have to borrow money and, to keep the cash flow of the town going.
Okay. Any other questions, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for coming in, and, uh, motion to adjourn, is there a second? Further discussion, if not, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening, everyone, and we'll see you on the fifteenth.